Okay, well, we'll kind of get things rolling a little bit. Good afternoon, everyone. It is about eight minutes after three. Today is Wednesday, August 18th. This is the City Council meeting for the city of Indio. And this is the study session. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor, for the record, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Ramos Amit.
Thank you very, very much. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, everyone, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
And public comment. This is the time set aside for public comment for items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please either call in to our city clerk or fill out a form, a request to speak form. Ms. City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
I have no comments, Mayor.
We have no comments. Thank you, Sabdi. Item number four, study session items. City Retail Consultant Presentation and Discussion. Austin Farmer and Carrie Everett, the Retail Coach, Mr. Morgan.
It's okay to take this off when I talk, that's keep it on.
No, please take the, you're welcome to take it off.
Thank you so much. I can breathe. Madam Mayor, Mayor for Tim, Members of City Council. Good afternoon, Carl Morgan, your Economic Development Director. We appreciate the opportunity to do this study session to share with you what your city of Indio team, and I specifically don't say Economic Development Team because I say Indio Team because we're all working together collaboratively, including yourselves, the City Manager, to make all this great stuff happen. But for the last couple of years, you've been working with the Retail Coach. As some of you know, we replaced HDL and Barry Foster a couple of years ago with this company. And we've been working with them since that time, even through COVID. Behind the scenes, we just wanted to let you know what marketing and demographic information and what this great group has been doing to help us promote and attract new restaurants and retail in our community. I'm pleased to introduce Austin Farmer. He's the Project Director and Carrie Everett, Retail Recruitment Specialist with the Retail Coach. I've had the pleasure, as I said, to meet, work with these guys for the last couple of years. And myself, Kevin Snyder, City Manager and others, and I found them to be consumer professionals. They're going to give you about a 15 to 20 minute presentation to update you on our retail recruitment efforts, what they've been doing and staff behind the scenes. They're going to share data and findings from their research and retail marketing insights. Some of you took advantage of kind of a pre-conversation with them today and yesterday. Thank you for that. But I think what you're going to see is a very progressive, very proactive retail recruiting effort. And the things and the successes that we've had as a city, they don't come by happenstance. They're not by chance. It's really a strategic effort, as you well know. And it takes the policymakers and the leadership and City Manager and staff to implement and roll that forward. The Retail Coach is really an extension of the Economic Development Team. And we work hand in glove with them, helping to recruit and market and bring retailers to our community. They also do a lot of work interacting with and working with, for instance, the Hagen Company and other various retail shopping center owners up north and along Highway 111 and in other areas of our community. They are a resource to them. We pay for them, so there's no cost to those individuals. And they really do help them market their opportunity sites in our retail pads and so forth in the community. So the goal of this study session is to kind of give you that 15 to 20 minute kind of snapshot. And I think some of this will be eye-opening for you. And it'll also be refreshing to see what's been going on. And then really want to hear from you after that and have you give them your feedback, your input, and let them know and feel free to call out specific retailers or restaurants that you want in the community. And we'll certainly add it to the list and chase them down. So with that, I'd like to invite Austin up to the podium, and he has the mic and the floor.
Thank you, Carl. Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. It's just great to be here, especially with travel opening back up. It's nice to get back on the road and get to be in the community. We actually got in yesterday. We thought we'd get a little break from the Texas heat, but we got that humidity. So I think we came in at the worst time. But it's been good to be back in India. We've been here a handful of times over the last 17, 18 months in working with the city. And it's just really good to see all the positive momentum and a lot of things happening in the community. But for the purpose of today, just want to give you an update on where we're at in our process and some of the feedback we've gotten from retailers and restaurants. And really just give you visibility into the work that we've been doing. A lot of our work happens in the background. And so just want to make sure that you have visibility and a comfort level with what we're doing and make sure that it aligns with your vision for the community. So a little bit about us, we didn't get a chance before starting working with the community to come present to council. So a little bit of background on our company. We've been in the retail recruitment industry for over 20 years. So we started in early 2000 and have really pioneered the retail recruitment industry. We've worked in over 650 communities throughout 40 states in the U.S. And we have a lot of experience in Southern California and specifically in Riverside County. We actually have a handful of active clients across the county right now. So we're very well-versed in retail, specifically in this region. We have a project team that's dedicated to the city. So we actually, Carrie is here with me today. Carrie's our Retail Recruitment Specialist. So Carrie helps manage all of our relationships with retailers, brokers, site selectors. So he and I are out in the market taking pictures and really working with those brokers and site selectors. But we have an entire team that's dedicated specifically to the city. So Kelly Kofor, who's our President and CEO, he's a CCIM, a real estate professional. He helps on every project at a strategy level. So Kelly has been involved from the start of the process, just on strategy in terms of what retailers fit, really making sure we're using the right data. And then we have a backend support team that includes our Director of Research and Development, who manages all of our data and makes sure that we have the most up-to-date data for the community. And then our Director of Finance, who helps with project management and making sure that we're staying on track with the project. So the key takeaway there is, you know, outside of just myself, you have a dedicated team. And as Carl said, we really act as an extension of your team. So we really see ourselves as an extension of the Economic Development Team and the City Team and work with them as closely as we can so that when Carl or Kevin have questions or they need us to put together custom data for a retailer or potential developer, we work with them closely and make sure that we're getting all that stuff put together and that we're helping the city go out and get those retailers. So a little bit of background on the timeline. We started this project in early 2020, which by all accounts would be the worst time possible to start a project like that if you look at it that way. But I think, and you'll see through the data, I think there's something really optimistic about what we've seen through that timeline. So doing retail recruitment through COVID, you would expect that you would get a lot of no's or you would just not have any traction at all. And we actually have had a lot of traction for the city during one of the worst times possible for retail recruitment. And I think that says a lot about the market and a lot about the opportunity coming out of COVID as well. So we've been able to actually accomplish a lot, a lot more than we thought we would during the pandemic. And again, that makes us really optimistic about where we're going. And a few of the key objectives that we have for our work with the city. The first was to come in and really help understand the retail market. There are a lot of perceptions that people have about the Indio market that aren't actually true. And there's perceptions about who's in the market and what that retail customer looks like. So we really wanted to put customized data together to help either validate or break those assumptions and really help define what that market is so we can go sell that to retailers and ultimately developers as well. We want to identify retail leakage. So where are people going when they're leaving the market? What are people leaving the market to go get other places? Whether it's goods or services or eating in other markets? And then ultimately identifying new retail opportunities. So not only just categorically where there's opportunity in the community, but also specifically. So we put together a list of over 60 retailers and restaurants that we've been recruiting to the community. And the end goal there is to actually get those retailers to community through the recruitment process. So that the work that we've completed to date, this is our, we have an eight-step process called the Retail 360 Process. And to date, we have fully gotten through the first six of those phases. And we're actively working on the last four phases. Those are the phases that are ongoing throughout our process. So those are always in the work. But we start with a retail market analysis, so really identifying what the core market is, where there's really your core customer, who they are, your retail trade areas. We identified retail opportunities, again, from a data perspective, so quantifiably. But then we also qualitatively were able to say, you know, who are those actual retail opportunities? We identified some key development and redevelopment opportunities. So along the I-10 corridor, along 111, really identifying key sites that we think are key to retail development in the community. We identified retailers and developers. We actually put together some marketing materials. We like to call them promotional materials for the available sites in the community. You know, I know there's other marketing initiatives happening. So we're working with Brooke and North Star on some of that. But our marketing is really more focused towards retailers for specific sites in town. For example, the Sizzler that's available, really taking that data and really marketing or promoting that site to try to get a restaurant in there from their recruitment. So we've actually been recruiting retailers and developers for the last year. And then we also are currently working on a downtown revitalization process. So we actually had a meeting this morning with a brewery that's interested in downtown. And so had some really good conversations about some city-owned sites downtown. So really focused on where there's opportunity for specific retailers or restaurants and then trying to focus on downtown-specific opportunities. And then ongoing coaching and support, which is really just running reports and data and then helping with conferences. So we're still in the process and kind of actively working through each of those ongoing phases. So I mentioned the retail market analysis. When we come into a community, we look at ultimately what your retail trade area is. So a lot of communities will actually underestimate what their retail trade area is. They'll look at their city limits, right? So they'll look at what their city population is, you know, for purposes of Indio. A lot of people look at you as a community of 90,000 or just 100,000. So they'll kind of lump you in with those communities. Or you'll have retailers or site selectors that will use computer models to identify what your retail trade area is. And those are essentially radials or drive times. So they'll just put a five-mile radio on the map and say, what's the population within five miles? And when you do that, and specifically with a community like Indio, you're really underselling that market. And so the first part of our market analysis is to identify what your actual retail trade area is. And the way that we do that is we use cellphone data. So we have the ability to track GPS data from consumer cellphones. So we geo-fence key locations in town, so your top retailers and restaurants. And we can actually track foot traffic and see who's coming into and out of those actual retail locations, how frequently they're coming, where they live, where they work. And we can really use that data to put together a core profile for the community. And that's really important because that helps us go out and paint that better picture and really paint the best light of what that retail trade area is. So really having that data and leveraging that to say, we know within 99% accuracy where people are coming from to shop and dine in the community. And that's really important because previously you haven't had that data, right? You've been, it's a little scary too. There's a lot of personal protection built in there, so we can't track anyone individually. If you're looking at it saying it kind of has that Big Brother feel to it. But it's, it really is state-of-the-art technology. The target in a lot of Fortune 500 retailers have actually started using the same platform that we're using when they do their new store site selection. So it puts us in that top level of statistical confidence. When we're looking at your market, it helps us sell it and helps us get interest. We've actually had retailers that we've reached out to in the recruitment process that have seen that data and said, wow, we had no idea. We just assumed that they didn't look anything like the West Valley. And our data's helped change their minds and get them interested and look at some sites. But ultimately, the key takeaway is we're using the best data, the most accurate data possible to really paint an accurate picture of Indio and really challenge the assumptions or perceptions that people have of the market and make sure that they know how much opportunity is here. So doing that, we ultimately do a couple of things. We look at those specific retailers and restaurants to see where the foot traffic is coming from. But we also do a zip code analysis where we can look at specific markets that people are coming from. And the map there on the screen is an example that we did for shoppers at Indio Town Center. And that's showing people that made at least three to four trips to Indio Town Center over the last 12 months. And so what we're able to do with that data is really pinpoint where those markets are and where customers are coming from. And those top six there, it's kind of hard to see. But if you look at where those customers are coming from, you have a couple of zip codes on there for Indio. So Indio's make up about eight to nine percent of that traffic. But you've got four, a little over 4%, almost 5% coming from Coachella. You have traffic coming from La Quinta and then Thermal and Cathedral City. And the reason that that data is important is because it helps us prove out the actual market people are coming from. So between the aggregate data that we have on specific households and knowing where people live that are coming to the market, when we add that zip code profile in there, it really helps us paint that complete picture of regionally where you're pulling people from. And what we're able to do with that is actually hand draw your retail trade area. So there's two shapes on that map you see there. There's one solid blue outline. That blue outline is the city limits. And then the dark shaded blue area with the white outline on it is what we call your primary retail trade area. So we actually were able to plot all the cellphone data, go into that and actually hand draw on the map based on where there was critical mass of people coming into and out of top locations in town. So these are people that we consider your core customer. That primary retail trade area is what a retailer or restaurant would consider their, you know, weekly traffic. That's where they're going to make most of their money from, and that's where their core customer lives. And when we do that, it really paints a great picture of the community. I was telling Carl earlier that the data is actually better than I thought it would be for the community, which is a really good thing to see. And when we look at that, the key things that we saw here, when we look at population, you know, if you look at the city on a map or using radials, you're going to be in that 90 to 100,000 population because you don't have a ton of core density. It just doesn't work the way that they run those models to really paint the best picture. This primary retail trade area is actually up over 200,000, puts you up in that 205,000 range. The reason that that's important is because retailers have thresholds of populations they need for retail trade areas. And so a lot of retailers will say, we need 100,000 people in our trade area. We need 150,000 people in our trade area. And so there's a lot of retailers that have that 200,000 threshold specifically in this region and markets similar to Indio. And so that really opens the door to a lot of retailers and restaurants that previously just wouldn't look at the market. They would look at it and say, their population 90,000 or, you know, their trade area might have 125,000. So this data helps us get over that hurdle. So we at least can get our foot in the door with some of those retailers that are up in that 200,000-plus range. And a lot of those retailers, when they've seen this data, have had favorable responses. So that's been something that's been really positive is getting past that hurdle to at least get to those decision-makers and then ultimately get feedback from them on the market. And we've actually had a few fast casual restaurants that have committed to the market. So we're excited about that. That data's been pivotal in actually getting people to commit and submit an LOI on specific sites in town. So that's been huge. The other aspects that we found interesting is, you know, there seems to be a perception of Indio that you share some characteristics of the West Valley, but you don't others, right? People typically think that your income's lower than the rest of the valley. And they think that your population is a little bit older, kind of like the other side of the West Valley. One of the things we found is that you actually have pretty strong demographics, right? When you look at that primary retail trade area, instead of just the city limits, your actual consumer, those demographics are pretty strong and they're actually pretty diverse, which is also helpful. So you don't have one type of customer in the community. You actually have multiple types of customers in the community. And then when you look collectively at that retail trade area, those demographics are actually pretty strong. One of the things that caught me off guard was how young the population skews. So you actually, when I look at this data, is if I was doing site selection for a retailer, the data shows me that you have a strong population of young families, which is a very good thing that retailers are going to be looking for. If you have kids, you know, retailers love kids because you have to continuously buy things, right? New school stuff, new sporting goods stuff. Your age distribution works really well and it really paints you as that family-driven environment, specifically in the valley. We're actually trying to recruit a family entertainment concept to come into town. And the family entertainment concept has come back and said, hey, we don't have a franchisee right now that can actually build. But when we come to the valley, we're going to Indio because we need to be in that family-driven environment. They have the kind of demographics that work for us. And so that's really great to see that the data shows that you have young families and that it's a family-driven community. But it's nice to see that retailers see that as well. And so that's really good to be able to paint that picture and then have those retailers identify that as well. The other was average household incomes. So your average household income actually pushes up just under 85,000, so 84,199. And that median household income pushes up over 55,000, 56,524. And those are good numbers. Those aren't the highest in the region, but they don't need to be the highest in the region. They just need to hit certain thresholds. And typically, if you're over that 50,000 median and you're up over 75,000 average household, that's going to pair well with that 200,000 population and helps us paint a strong picture with those retailers and developers. So really good numbers, especially when we look at all the things that retailers look at. They typically will kind of diagnostically work through a community. And they'll start with population. Does population meet our threshold? Check. This household income? Check. What do the age profiles look like? And so that's really good because from all standards that we see and we track, you're hitting each one of those boxes, you're checking those boxes, which is a great sign. So that was your primary retail trade area. We looked at a larger area called the secondary retail trade area. And that's where we would consider your kind of monthly to annual shopper, right? So these are shoppers that are going to come into the community, not necessarily on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, but if they need to come in for entertainment, right? So if there's opportunities for them to come in to do family entertainment or maybe see a movie, go to dinner somewhere, or if they're going to buy a bigger ticket item, so like car purchase, for example, if they're going to come out and buy a vehicle or an automobile. And so that area is a lot larger because we don't need the high level of frequency of how many times they're shopping in the community. And so that actually pushes you up over the 300,000 range, and it's at 317,000. And I think the optimism that we have about that secondary retail trade area is that it's pretty large. So that opens the door for those regional retailers and different concepts. But on both of your primary and secondary trade areas, we actually were pretty conservative. So we try to be as conservative as possible with the data that we're using because when we track foot traffic in those visits, you can actually start to balloon those trade areas up pretty big because we can see where all that traffic's coming from. And so even when we're conservative, you know, we could probably extend these trade areas by five to 10% on each one, but we don't have to, which is a great sign. And so that means that we can be pretty conservative with data and still show the strength in the numbers that we need to, to those retailers. So really good sign from a data perspective. It paints a good picture of the community and it helps us go out and recruit those retailers. We also looked at psychographics. And if you haven't heard the terminology psychographics, it's basically what we call demographics on steroids, right? So demographics tells us who's in the community and what they look like. Psychographics tell us what they do. So what their purchase preferences are, what categories they fit into, either socio-economically or from a consumer spending perspective. And the good news here is that you have a lot of different, what we call, life mode groups. So we use Esri, who's basically the gold standard for retail data. We use their Tapestry Segmentation Model. And we look at these life mode groups. And the reason this is important is because most retailers, in the same way that they have population limits and thresholds they look for, they have certain consumers that they look for as well. And this just helps us pinpoint those and make sure that we can show them that the right consumer is in the market. And this is a little bit hard to see, but if you look at this slide, you can see some of the categories there. So within that white area is going to be the retail trade area. That white outline is your primary retail trade area. And so you can see you've got a pretty good mix of colors in there. The top category that you have is actually that lighter purple kind of fuchsia color, which is what we call ethnic enclaves, which is midway down that chart on the left. It's L7, so that's 32% of your population. That, that group, I think, is pretty indicative of kind of the historic population of Indio, right? So mostly Hispanic, younger families. They live in households, they're either single-family households or multi-generational households. That's the same with that darker purple color, the new wave, L13, that makes up 16% of the population. And that's what we'd expect to see in Indio, just given the history of the community and given the growth of the population. But what we've started to see is that that is shifting away from how much of a majority of the community that has been in the past. And so you have pockets in there of some of these other life mode groups. And so when we look at some of the others that are in there, you can see some of the pink and the light blue colors in there. The light blue color there is what we call middle ground. And so that's about 8% of that population. And those are going to be young urbanites and people that are coming out to the suburbs, right? So they're going to be a little bit younger, they're looking to start families. In some cases, they might be single. And then you have a mix in there of a couple of different other groups, like senior styles. And senior styles, if you can see as you move west, you start to see a lot of that population in that senior styles category. A lot of that's going to be people that are either retired or they've got vacation homes out here. But the good thing about this breakdown and what we see on this map is that it shows that you've got diversity in the community and that you skew towards younger families, which is really good because that's, again, what retailers are looking for. Just to give you an example of some of the profiles for those top three, this is for Los Casas, which is your highest group in that life mode segment. And so if you look at that market profile, their median age is late twenties, so 28.3, relatively low median household income. Typically, in the U.S., there's 912,000 of those households in the U.S. So they're typically kind of regionally concentrated. There's a lot of those households in Southern California. But if you look at some of the things that they purchase, you see their recent purchase reflect personal style, apparel, personal care products. The family is reflected in purchases as well, so baby products and children's apparel. That's a great sign for traditional retailers because they're looking for people that have those young families that are purchasing those baby products and children's apparel. So those are the type of data sets that we like to send those retailers because it affirms what they're looking for in this market. The next category is 7C, that's ethnic enclaves, American Dreamers. And so that median age is up a little bit, it's in their early 30s. Median household income shoots up a little bit there to 50,000. And ultimately, these are your young families. So their average household size is 3.19. So typically, a married couple with a child, or you might have a multi-generational family. We have parents and a child that's moved back in that's in their early 30s. But typically, you're going to see the families represented there as well. And so you're going to see a young family consumer who is focused on growing, whether it's in their career, whether it's growing their family. They typically, when they dine out, they like to go to fast food and fast casual restaurants. And so you'll see that, see a lot of the places on there that you have in town, right? So Taco Bell or Little Caesar's, they like family-friendly restaurants like Olive Garden, Denny's and IHOP. And so you'll see a lot of that, and you'll see a lot of those retailers and restaurants already in the community. The third group is the up-and-coming families. And those are a little bit higher in terms And those are a little bit higher in terms of household income. They're in that early thirties age bracket. So again, you'll see the theme of young families, right? In that younger demographic. And they have a lot of the same market profiles, but they, they like to drive SUVs. They carry some debt on their credit cards, but they also maintain retirement plans. And then they tend to purchase family goods and home improvement goods as well. So all of those are things that those retailers are looking for. Just all of that points back to the overall goal is, do we have a market that we can go market to retailers? And, and the answer is yes. All of that data really points in the right direction and, and we're checking those boxes that the retailers and restaurants are looking for. So getting out of the, the super detailed data for a second, this is just a quick infographic we put together. We're, we're working on putting a, a version together that we can share publicly and, and that we can put together that Brooke and, and North Star might can get some value of as well, or use some of that data in some of their marketing efforts. But this is just a market profile of the India consumer. And so when we look at the India consumer, the, the average India consumer doesn't actually just live in India, right? So they live in, in India, Coachella or La Quinta. The, the average age, they're actually more likely to be a millennial or Gen Z than they are an older generation, which is actually a relatively new shift. So if you look at, at those graphics there, you can see twenty four point nine percent are Gen Z, twenty four point eight percent are millennials. And then some of those older generations have actually come down a bit, right? So Gen X is sixteen point nine and then Gen, Gen B is nineteen point six. So you, you really have a, a good mix there that's again, skewing to that younger side. They're likely to be employed as a professional, in a professional role. So fifty five percent of that trade area population is a white collar worker. Twenty four percent are blue, blue collar and then twenty one percent are services. The nine point one percent unemployment rate, we feel like is, is a little high. I think that data, we, we need to pull some more data for that. I think that has been skewed a little bit, just when we updated the data, it's pulling in some of those COVID numbers as well. So I think that true unemployment number is a little bit lower than that. But typically in, in this consumer profile, when retailers are looking at it, that mix that you have on the employment scale is, is good. That's, that's what retailers can be looking for because you have some mix of that entire spectrum of service workers and hourly workers all the way up to those white collar and executive roles. So that's a good sign. And then in terms of expenditures, their, their annual lifestyle expenditures on average are in line or slightly above what the regional and national averages are on those annual expenditures. So that's a good sign. The, the sampling there just shows some of the categories that they tend to focus on. When you look at that, that larger breakdown of their annual expenditures, you'll see that they skew heavily on family entertainment, family outings, travel, and then a lot of the food components as well, which is, you know, it's, it's in line with what we're seeing on all the demographics and the psychographic data as well. Any questions so far before I jump into demand? Okay, good. So that, that retail market profile is really what sets the stage for us to, to go out and identify where we have retail opportunity, right? So we know that there's two hundred thousand plus population in that retail trade area. The, the next step is to identify where there's actually opportunity for retail. And so the way we do that is we look at, at two different things. We look at your retail demand and that's ultimately where there's projected demand in the market over the next five years. So where is their projected growth over the next five years? And then we look at retail leakage. So where are people leaving? What are they going to get outside the market? From a demand perspective, you, you have a lot of good positive projected demand. Most categories have projected demand growth over the next five years. We highlighted a few here, just to, to kind of talk through some of the ones that we've seen where there's a lot of opportunity. You'll see on the, the right column there, that annual growth percentage. Anything over three percent, we consider really strong growth or projected growth. Anything over four percent is, is really, really strong projected growth. I think one thing that's interesting is one of those up there with, with four percent, almost five percent growth is, is gas stations. That is always interesting because there's opportunity there, there's taxable income there. But at the end of the day, we probably don't want to go out and recruit a whole bunch of new gas stations, specifically to certain parts of the community. Councilman Ortiz and I were talking about that this morning in terms of how we prioritize. And ultimately, when we look at this list, what this helps us do is identify the categories that have the most potential for growth and specifically in India. And, and so this helps us prioritize and identify where we should invest time and resources on recruitment perspective. But just because something's up there doesn't mean that it's top priority, right? So, so gasoline stations, I think there is opportunity for those specifically in some of the strategic plans for some of these corridors, I ten, one eleven. But it's not something we've prioritized. And in terms of priority, we've stuck with full service restaurants and limited service restaurants. That's one of the things we hear the most is, hey, we need, we need casual sit down restaurants. And, and that's evident in the data, but you know, it's, it's important for us to make sure we're prioritizing that. One of the things we've talked about though is, I think there's also an opportunity to help residents realize that there actually are a lot more casual sit down restaurants in town than they think there are. And you know, we ate at the, the tack room last night and, and I love eating there when we come to town. I think there's a, a lot of great restaurants in town that people overlook. And so one of the things that is helpful for us is, is we're going out and trying to bring in new restaurants. It's just encouraging citizens when possible, whether it's through the marketing efforts and, and what the marketing group and North Star is working on, but really encourage people to, to start eating at some of the local establishments. They may not, just because it's not a national restaurant or they might go somewhere else. Retailers and restaurants have the ability to, to pull competitor sales. And certainly restaurants, they can see, you know, alcohol sales and, and they can look at comps on what other people are doing. So it's always helpful when the existing base of restaurants is doing well. So that's, that's kind of a side note there, but yeah, we're, we're focused on bringing in new casual sit down restaurants and full service restaurants. But it's helpful to, to have that existing base really do well. So just encouragement there on, on having people shop and eat local. The other categories that we, we see as priority are electronics and appliance stores. There, there's a couple of new concepts, you know, that traditionally that's just been Best Buy and, and a few other concepts. But there are some new concepts, Amazon has some concepts coming out. So we're looking through unique opportunities to try to target that sector. Health and personal care stores, there's actually a lot of opportunity in pharmacies and drugstores. Those gas stations come up high opportunity wise and then sporting goods and, and pet, and pet supply stores. That's where a bulk of our attention has been focused is really those full service and fast casual restaurants. And then some of those specialty retailers that we think can fill some of the gaps that we have in the community in terms of things like sporting goods or those kind of specialty pet supplies as well. And, and I'll say this real quick, a, a lot of our data is geared towards traditional retail and restaurants. But we've also had a lot of productive conversations with hotel groups as well. So, so when we say retail, we're really talking about a larger subset that's not just retail and restaurants. That includes hospitality and entertainment as well. So one of the other categories that we're really focused on is, is family entertainment venues. I, I mentioned that one earlier that, that said, India is probably where they're going to come when they come to, to the valley. But we're focused on long-term family entertainment opportunities as well. So retail leakage is ultimately tracking, we use that same cell phone data to track where people are, are going when they leave the community. So where are they going when they actually are leaving India to, to go buy goods and get services in other markets? This map is just highlighting shopping centers in and out of India that people go to. And you'll notice that the second most popular destination there is, is Washington Park in La Quinta. And so when we look at that data, it, it really kind of validates what we know, that, that people are shopping in some of the surrounding communities and they're going to specific retailers and restaurants. And the way that we've used this data and how we put together our recruitment list is we look at two things. We, we look at, okay, can we actually replicate the spots that they're going? Are there retailers or restaurants that are far enough away that we can actually duplicate or replicate those in India? So that we can put that in the market and keep people from leaving. And then the second is, okay, if, if something's too close, if we've got Trader Joe's or In-N-Out, that's, that's too close or we can't support another In-N-Out in the community, what are the alternatives, right? What, what's the alternative to Trader Joe's? If, if we can't convince them that they're not, that we're not far enough away from their existing location and really finding an alternative. So that's, that's where we start. We start with the duplication and try to do that first, if it makes sense. And then beyond that, trying to move to where there's new opportunities for new concepts or different concepts outside of where people are leaving for. But the, the good news when we look at your leakage data is that there's actually not a ton of leakage. A, a lot of it is concentrated to surrounding communities. So i- it's good to see that you actually do have people that are staying in India fairly often. There's always going to be retail leakage though. So I, I say that kind of, just kind of a baited statement, you know, there's, there's not as much as we see in a lot of communities, but there's still a lot, right? And, and there's still a lot of leakage that you can capture. And that ultimately, the reason that, that we focus on that is that translates to sales tax, right? So when someone's leaving the community to go to places, they're taking sales tax dollars with them. And so we want to try to, we're never going to capture all that leakage, but we want to try to keep them in town as much as possible. So if they're leaving town to go get stuff once a week in other markets, we want to try to see if we, they can leave three times a month instead of four. Or we can keep them there, you know, two of those four times out of a month because they're more likely to spend money in other places in the community if we can keep them there. So that's the ultimate goal is, is really to chip away at that leakage and keep as much of that money as we can. So identifying retailers and developers, we, we put together a retail match list that originally had sixty different retailers and restaurants on it for, for us to recruit to the community. And that ultimately, that list came from looking at a few factors. Did the retailers fit the market? And so, so do we, does our profile for India fit what those retailers are looking for? And that's everything from the population to their typical demographics, preferred household incomes. We targeted retailers, restaurants, hotels, entertainment facilities, and then also breweries and wineries. We, we made a point to have a concerted effort to go after regional breweries and wineries. So we've actually been recruiting a lot of those breweries out of San Diego and Orange County and some of the, the LA county areas, just to see if we can take an opportunity as, as people are moving out of some of those areas. So that, that focus is really on a few different factors there. And then we're also targeting traditional and mixed use developers in the region. So we're, we're focused on for existing sites, how we can get those retailers into those available sites in town. And then if we have available land, you know, is there a developer we can bring to the table? Or does the property owner want to develop that property? So really focused on all those different recruitment points. I mentioned that the sixty retailers and restaurants, I believe we're up at, at ninety now between some of the breweries and some additional at retailers concepts that we've added there. So we're, we're doing as much as we can to really make sure that we're hitting all the concepts that work for the community. On the development and redevelopment opportunities, we identified key sites in town and, and really focused on what the highest and best use is for those specific spots. Those key areas that we focused on probably won't surprise you. I, I think that the most opportunity that we see from a short-term perspective is really concentrated around a few areas. The highway one eleven corridor, there's a lot of retailers that are interested in that corridor. A lot of restaurants interested because of the traffic in there. The existing developments and then the land that we can develop along I ten and along the I ten corridor. Downtown, downtown's actually a, a unique recruiting challenge because there's not a lot of national retail brands that, that go to downtowns anymore. So a lot of that's been regionally focused and independently focused. And then we focused on a few other neighborhood and smaller parcels that, that we can focus on for retail growth. So promoting available sites, we, we put together a ton of data to, to go out and promote those sites. We, we don't love to use the term marketing, but essentially what we're trying to do is market those sites to those retailers and developers. And all that is, is, is putting together custom data. You can see an example up there for Trader Joe's, but we put together feasibility packages for each one of the retailers on our match list and, and put together custom data with the India market, this branded with their logo on it, and really make a, a big push to get them to the market. And, and so we've done a retail market profile, those feasibility packages. We, we've done custom data for development and redevelopment sites. And then we're actually putting together custom packages for retail conferences that we're going to. So one of those is the, the International Council of Shopping Centers, the conference in, in Las Vegas that Mayor, I know you've been to a few times. So we'll actually be putting together custom materials for that and helping set up meetings out at ICSC before we go out to that as well. And then from a recruitment perspective, we, we put together a retail dashboard. And so we have a, a real-time dashboard that I believe you have the link to. If not, we'll send it back out. But we actually are tracking all the feedback. So all of our interactions and all of our feedback with retailers and developers is tracked on this spreadsheet that you have access to and visibility to. And the goal there is, is to move them through the pipeline. So we're, we're tracking all the responses we get and then categorizing those based on whether or not they're interested in the community, what they need to come to the community, if there's a short-term opportunity or a long-term opportunity. And then ultimately pushing them through that funnel to, to get them committed to the community, whether it's a site visit or an LOI or get them open in the community. And that dashboard's updated pretty much weekly and, and we add all of the feedback we've gotten from the retailers on there. The reason that's important is because we, we take that throughout the, the life of our project. We take that feedback we get and we use that to put together a game plan for the community. So a, a lot of the times we'll get retailers that'll tell us no or hey, we're, we're not interested right now. And we follow up with them to figure out what it would take to get them to the community. So if, if they're telling us that the community doesn't work right now, then we come back and say, hey, what, what would it take to get you here in twelve months? What's keeping you out of the community? And in a lot of cases, that gives us great feedback to, to help make recommendations to council in terms of things you can do, whether it's strategic planning or if there's actual tactical things on specific sites that are keeping retailers out. So we can have a, a marching order for, hey, here's what we need to do to get this retailer to the community. And so you have full, full visibility to that and full access to that. I mentioned our conference representation. We'll have a couple of conferences coming up at the end of the year. The International Council of Shopping Centers Recon Conference is, is the biggest one. It's actually called Here We Go this year. It's in December in Las Vegas. We have a large booth out there and, and we'll actually be setting up meetings for the city ahead of time. So we'll, we'll be getting a schedule ready for you before we go out there and helping set those meetings. And then we have a large booth out there that the city will have access to and be able to use. So you can have meetings in our booth if you'd like to, or if, if you've got bags, you can store your bags in our booth and around and we'll have everything locked up there. So great resource to, to have out there. I, I think this year, coming out of COVID with what we've seen momentum wise, I think it's going to be huge. They, they think the conference is going to be about sixty, seventy percent of what it typically is. But I, I think by the time we get to December, I think it's going to be closer to, to ninety to a hundred percent. So I'm, I'm excited. I think there's a lot of potential there, especially with a lot of the retailers we've been talking to for the last year with coming out of COVID and them having some cemented plans for their future growth. I think we'll have a lot of good meetings out there. Last one was downtown revitalization. I touched on it a couple of times, we're, we're working with Carl and Kevin and working through the, the downtown specific plan as we're looking at what, what we can do with either city-owned property or available sites and, and really focused on downtown specific retailers and merchants. We, we think we're pretty close to, to getting a brewery downtown. So we're, we're excited about that. We think that'll take the shape of a, a tap room or some type of, of kind of regional tasting room. So we're really excited about that and, and think we can do a lot of downtown. I, I touched on ongoing coaching and support, but for the sake of time, I'll, I'll jump to questions. If you have any questions or anything that you'd like to dig into.
Thank you very, very much. What a comprehensive and energizing and exciting presentation. I want to turn it over to my council, let's see if anyone has any questions or comments.
I have one question and, and I, I presented this question earlier, but just for, for the whole council to consider. What are some of the reasons that you're hearing about more often that are presenting barriers for companies looking to come into India?
Yeah. So the, the biggest thing that we hear when we get a, a not right now or that a retailer's not necessarily interested in India, a lot of it has to do with timing. So a lot of it has to do with the population. So, so you either don't have enough population density currently for them or they have a, a previous expansion plan where they've, they've kind of already decided that they're going to move through the valley from west to east, right? And so those are the, the two biggest challenges we have is using that data to make sure that we can convince them the population's there. Sometimes it's just not. Some of those retailers look for three hundred thousand population within five miles and, and they stick to that. And so it's hard to really overcome it, but that's been, I'd say the biggest challenge. The other is just the, the positioning. So really convincing people that, that there's a new world now with the way the demographics in the community has, has shifted, that India shouldn't be the last stop anymore, right? You shouldn't just expand out from west to east. We're really excited, we just got a, a LOI for Raising Canes. And they're one of those that they're, this is going to be their first value location. And, and so that's, I, I think a huge success, being able to convince them. And we have a couple of other fast casual restaurants that have done the same thing where their first value location is going to be in India. And so that's, that's what we're trying to push for in that case, is being able to say, hey, we're not the last stop anymore. And that's one of the, the challenges, just convincing people that, that the positioning doesn't matter anymore.
And also just thank you for, you know, bringing, bringing us up to a new level on the data.
Yeah.
And, and what we're presenting to other, to other companies. This looks, looks great.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other women?
I don't have any questions, just some comments. First of all, you know, thank Mr. Morgan, city manager, and thank you all for this presentation. I mean, this, this does takes, takes us to a new level and it's, it's modern. It's modern, utilizing modern technology for us to gather these numbers and gather, gather this data. And also it gives our public who are watching confidence in not only the council, but staff that we're actively seeking to bring these needs and wants to our community because it's been so long that sometimes we don't have answers. But you know what? If I have a link to the data. sometimes we don't have answers. But you know what? If I have a link to the dashboard, I could give real-time information to a constituent on the possibility of raising canes coming to the city of Indio. So I love that concept. I love the what you're what you're all doing. And a lot of good stuff, and I'm just looking forward to to continue this this partnership with the city and to continue actively working with staff to bring these folks to our community. And let me tell you, we're not going to be the last stop. You know, Indio is the place to be. And so this is, these numbers are going to prove it. And so this is promising, and it's also part of that whole storytelling that we're going to do to shed these perceptions that we've had for so long. These numbers prove that those perceptions are false. And so thank you for bringing this to us. I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. And I think a great point there on the on the community perspective, because of our relationship and because we act as an extension of the team, bring those when residents come up to you and and say, hey, why don't we have X, Y, and Z, even if it's ridiculous? You know, let us know, and and we like to reach out to them just to give you ammo to have, so you can say, hey, we've talked to them. Here's what they've said, and and we can keep that line of communication open. You know, the the two biggest we always get are Chick-fil-A and Nordstrom, right? And no matter what community we're in, I could be in the middle of nowhere, Iowa, and they want Chick-fil-A and Nordstrom. And even if it's not a reality, even if it's not going to happen, we'll reach out to them because we need to know what that feedback is. And that doesn't mean that a no today is a no six months or twelve months or five years from now. And so get it on their roadmap. So anytime you get that feedback, we'd love to hear it, and we'd love to reach out and make sure that we're supporting you in that as well.
And also, I just want to add that your comments on duplication, and that's that's powerful. Because there's some stores and retail stores, department stores, box stores that our community may not necessarily have knowledge of, because we don't have it in the valley. For instance, take Dillards. We don't have a Dillards in the Coachella Valley, but that might mirror another a store that our residents want, and and something like that comes in. You know, that makes everyone happy. So those are just great models to go by. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I appreciate the the information, very detailed in in what you come out and cut a couple of questions on it. Because you gave us the numbers, three hundred thousand and that, but with Indio being the largest city, and I understand what you said to Mr. Ortiz, you know, our area of of I guess you want to say, volume of individuals that not only come into the city because of the county buildings, because of other stuff. Obviously, it's not as busy, because a lot of the stuff is closed down because of COVID. But we're so much larger than any other city. So I find I find it ironic that you're saying that we don't have enough population, but there's a lot of other cities that are very much smaller than us that have some of these restaurants and other stuff that you're telling me won't come because of population. So there's got to be a little bit more to it than just that.
There is. And that example, you know, when you look at La Quinta and Palm Springs, some of those, they have a couple of things that they've been able to overcome that population barrier with, right? They have wealth first and foremost. They have a high density of wealth. They also have the ability, they for the longest time have been able to draw from Indio, but Indio hasn't been able to draw it back, right? And that's a perception that we hear a lot. I think that's breaking, because even on our our primary retail trader, you can see where we show people coming in from La Quinta. And I've always heard people say, hey, people will will go from Indio to La Quinta, but they're not going to go from La Quinta in Indio. And we're able to prove that that that's not true anymore. And and so that's one of those barriers that's prevented that with the population aspect.
So obviously, we have the I ten corridor, where a lot of other places don't. It'll take care of itself, obviously, because of the amount of traffic that comes through and the ease of getting in and out. That's a big part of it. So as the mall comes forward and you see that, obviously, you're going to help us with, you know, helping our other agencies that are working with us or other businesses are working with us. How do how do we help you then with this information data? When you say give you some comments, I mean, obviously, one of the biggest problems that we have here, and and for myself, too, is we have a lot of good restaurants that are homegrown, but we really don't have a lot of good casual restaurants. And that's where La Quinta and other places beat us, because they have a more variety. Ours, you know, some of our food, like our our Mexican food is by far superior, some of our Italian food. Tac Room's a little further out of the way, but you know, we're getting some of these casual ones. But like, I would anticipate like a Panera Bread, maybe not an Olive Garden as much, you know, they're they're on the way down a little bit. But how do we help you to get some of those? Because if they come, kind of like Capobis, the people will utilize it. But I I don't understand the the reason is behind some of that compared to what it is. You know, people will shop here if they come.
Yep, absolutely. Those examples specifically, I I think the best thing that you can do is counsel is be open to whatever needs to be done to get those retailers in. Not necessarily incentives. Sometimes it's it's just support and letting them know that that you're favorable and that you want them in the community. Sometimes it can it can be a planning request or a zoning request. I think that's the biggest thing that you can do. And then outside of that, if it comes down to specific asks from retailers, just being open to entertaining those and hearing those and looking at opportunities to to help remove barriers. That's the biggest thing, I think, that you can do. The economic development team has done a really good job of of doing a lot of that already. One of the things we always say is, community development precedes economic development. So a lot of that is already being done, right? The planning that's going into the one eleven corridor, a lot of the redevelopment, the the Indio marketplace, that a lot of that's in in progress, but anything on that community development side that you can do or on a planning side to make sure there aren't roadblocks there. Panera is an interesting example. I I know Carl has has talked to them for years well before we got here, and we've had great conversations with them, too. That's just going to be a timing issue. You know, it's going to be on their timing. Seems like everything points to the fact that they want to be here, and we've had great conversations with them. But we're just waiting for them to to give us a timeline, a timeline or a timetable on on getting here. But I think we're in that opportunity area where we're going to move out from. You've got those fast food restaurants covered. You you have some of the fast casual stuff. But we're starting to see some of those next wave of retailers come in. So the the three or four restaurants that are new to town or that have LOIs are all in that next tier up of that fast casual tier. So you're kind of moving past that that quick serve fast food base that you have, and you're starting to get some of those retailers that signal that the market's ready for another next level, which is those casuals. So the momentum's there, the progress is there. I think it's just a matter of timing. Once we start to get some of these new restaurants in, we'll start to see some of those others come in, especially on the casual side.
And one last question. So obviously, the city of Indio is the largest city, but we also have a housing shortage. And we're looking at putting in affordable housing, different varieties of housing. That if you had to pick you, I mean, as a analyst, between wealth and density, which would be more popular for a business to come into?
If if you can keep the average household income up over that seventy-five to eighty thousand range, and you can create density in that range and higher, I would take density over over the wealth. Because you're the the biggest thing that we need to prove to these retailers and restaurants, particularly restaurants, because they have to they have served lunch and dinner, so they need daytime population as well. You have to prove that you have a consistent consumer base, and that there should be enough people to support lunch and dinner every day year-round. So that that's going to be a huge factor.
Thank you.
Yeah. One note on that, I'm sorry, that that just popped in my mind, seasonality as well. You know, I think one of the advantages you have over other valley communities is that you don't have as much seasonality, right? So the the trade areas that we put together don't factor in Coachella and Stagecoach. And so there's a huge selling point there that that we push on retailers to saying, hey, this isn't even taking advantage of the one of the biggest draws to the community. So that's huge. And then you don't get the huge summer decline that a lot of other communities like Palm Springs get, right? People live here, they stay here. These are primary homes. They're not vacation homes or secondary, and it's not tourism. So that's that's huge. That's a big aspect as well. That's going to help be competitive.
And you stirred another question for me. One of the other things is we are seasonal in an extent that we do have a lot of snowbirds that own property in in different, some of our gated communities, Shadow Hills, mine. But we also have three of the the highest-rated RV parks in the world, with Motocross Country Club, the Shores, and also outdoor resorts, which is, you know, you have to have a half a million dollar, three-quarter dollar million-dollar rig just to pull in. And there's four hundred, five hundred, six hundred spaces. How do those play into some of the the numbers and other people? Because I know, obviously, they want to be open year-round, but we have a large population. Plus, we have that brings a massive amount of wealth, and they can't, they have to go out and purchase their stuff that, you know, it's not like there's anything on site.
Right, right. For us, it's icing on the cake, right? So so that the community is strong enough, the demographics are strong enough to make a case to to not have to factor in seasonality. But when we do factor in seasonality, it helps push retailers and restaurants across the the hurdle. So that's, it it's too hard. We can't sell them on seasonality alone. If if your core consumer base were smaller, or your your demographics were a lot lower, the seasonality wouldn't matter at all. It's it's hard to sell, right? But it's icing on the cake. It helps us push them across, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to circle back. Thank you for some of your explanations, because part of the conversation I wanted to have and had with you yesterday is, how do we get people that are on the fence over to our side? And and you explained that very, very well. And then that economic component that has always been a factor as we've tried to bring certain restaurants and certain businesses in. And as more homes up in the north end have, you know, have have come in and and places as as the RV resorts, you know, people with a higher level expendable income, that also helps that level of business to come in. So all things that we need to take into consideration, I really, this is obviously phenomenal. Thank you, Carl, as well, for your hard work. And and everyone for being able to put this together and present this to us. I think we all now have a level of of hope and forward thinking in terms of how our city is going to develop and grow. And I made a comment to City Manager early. I have a young employee in his early twenties, and I said, I think Canes might be coming. I didn't get those words out of my mouth. He's like, I'm telling all my friends I will spend all my time in Indio. He has a second job, and he's going to college, college of the desert. He's like, we will be here. That is the best. But I'm like, okay, alrighty, there you go. Can you come to the council meeting, please?
Yeah.
I love it.
So so, you know, that's that's really great. And I, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I I think the one recommendation you just stirred in my mind that that I would leave with you is, you know, I wanted to make this presentation to to give you visibility as all our stuff happens in the background. I think the overarching theme is, you know, any support you can offer, we appreciate, and and then patience as well. Brian said this earlier, and this is something that that we've said for years, but retail recruitment's not an event. It's a process. And so luckily for us, when we got to the community, Carl and Kevin had set a really strong base and had been doing a lot of the stuff that needed to be done. And, you know, Brian's come in and amplified that, but it it doesn't happen overnight. So we're we're happy to to have some successes, but let us know if you have questions as we're going. And, you know, if there's an opportunity, we'd we'd love for you to to have some patience as we're going through the process, because it does take a while. Even even when we have retailers interested, it can it can take six, twelve months to get them in. So just want to throw that out there and and remind everyone it is a process, and and we're doing everything we need to do to compete, though.
We're ready.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, everyone. Okay, it is four o'clock, and the the study session is over, and the closed session is open. This is a closed session of the City Council, successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Indio. And may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, for the record, all members of the council are present.
Thank you very, very much. Public comment. This is a time set aside for public comment for items not on the agenda. You can either fill out a slip at the in the lobby, or you can contact Ms. Sanchez, our city clerk. Are there any requests to speak?
I have no comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number three, adjourned a closed session to consider, Ms. City Man, oh, sorry, City Attorney. No, no, no.
Yeah, seriously. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you don't mind tonight, maybe I just dispense with the reading, because we have so much.
So many here.
So I will, so we will go ahead and go into closed sessions for the items listed on the agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Fantastic. All right, we shall now adjourn to closed session.